Good evening. Am I on? I'd like to call to order the monthly meeting of February.
Excuse me.
Excuse me. I'd like to call to order the monthly meeting of the Westboro Planning Board for February 4th, 2025. And the first thing we have on our agenda is a discussion of the BWALT that we had a presentation for on January 16th along with a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Before we start, I would just like to point out that the implement of the BWALT is based on the feasibility study and master plan. We hold as a planning board informational meetings. We get requests for easements and development support during the site plan review process. We provide comment on design and request funding through grants and private contributions. It's important to understand that we ourselves are not or don't make decisions really concerning the BWALT. What we do is support the master plan, which had the BWALT as one of its things that they would like to do, but it is up really to the Board of Selectmen and the town to provide the funding which is necessary for the BWALT. We're going to have a discussion among ourselves as members of the planning board. We will take comments from the audience. We've received a great deal of or continued information from various members of the community. But I'd just like to ask, when you make your comment, please bring up anything new. We've made an effort to read all the information which you've sent to us. But I think the point, we don't really need to rehash the same information we have heard more than once at this particular time. So we're looking for any new information which people wish to bring before our board. Excuse me. Couldn't hear. I was trying to talk into the microphone. All right, I hope everyone has heard me. All right. I think I'd like to talk to the board first. And Christina, have you got any comments or information you'd like to come before tonight on the BWALT?
I don't have anything additional.
John?
Neither do I.
John? Mark?
So I might have more comments afterwards, but for now, I really don't have anything more than I said at the joint meeting with the Select Board, which is, you know, basically, we need to find outside funding sources. I thought Chris made a good comment about establishing parking. That's something that we could be looking at doing. And I think you made a good point tonight that we're following a blueprint that was given to us. We're, you know, trying to ask developers for easements as they come in. That was those easements, those locations were established, not set by us, but we do try and use opportunities as they come before us to facilitate the BWALT. But the funding for the BWALT, I, my opinion should come as much as possible from outside sources. But it's not something that we have any control over as a board. So I agree with that point.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what else to say.
All right, is there anyone from the community that'd like to make a comment tonight? Yes, sir. And would you please keep your comments to two minutes or under? One time each.
Ken Kelly, 10 Hancock Way. I previously spoke in January at the joint meeting. Very helpful process.
I don't know if your microphone is on.
Pardon?
I don't know if your microphone is on. Westboro TV, can you hear him?
At the table, those are on.
You just gotta flick the button up. Jenny, help.
Okay, there we go. Okay, sorry. Ken Kelly, 10 Hancock Way. Within a few days after that meeting, January 16th, I'd collected names and contact information for about 50 folks who wished to remain informed about the Friends of the BWALT organization. I subsequently prepared and sent out an email to the 50 people who either expressed interest on January 16th or subsequently. Several of them bounced back as undeliverable, so if you're here tonight and didn't get that email, see me afterward. I've become more aware that there are neighbors who live in adjacent towns who are interested in supporting BWALT. So I've renamed the fledgling organization Friends of Westboro BWALT, inviting the involvement of folks from neighboring towns. Additional feedback I've received has been that a regional approach could more likely facilitate a collaborative approach with residents of surrounding communities and their towns' planning departments and trail committees. I've therefore reached out to town officials and trails committees in Shrewsbury, Northboro, and Southboro, the towns with which our BWALT trails would connect. I could, it could well be that the fledgling Friends of Westboro BWALT evolves into something more regional, depending upon where the volunteers come from and how things roll. I've additionally communicated with potential volunteers, town staff, and folks who've been instrumental in developing rail trails in other communities, including Friends of Natick Trails with their Kikichewit Rail Trail, Friends of Holliston Trails, and Friends of Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. Lastly, thus far, I've only heard from two volunteers able and willing to work on getting the organization started. So my additional efforts will be on hold until I get more volunteers willing to help. I hope I do. So thank you, planning board.
Thank you.
Yeah, for what you do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment tonight? Yes, ma'am.
Joanne Aramini, 7 Meadow Road. It's been said that BWALT is a high priority. And I just wanted to point out for you to consider that the master plan in 2021, 45.1% of the respondents were interested in moving BWALT forward. 55.8% of the respondents wanted safer bike lanes. They wanted the town to work on that. And 78.6% of the respondents wanted more work done on building sidewalks to connect neighborhoods. So I'm not sure how BWALT became a priority. And I guess I'd like to end with two questions in terms of a BWALT update. There is a study or something being done on an alternate route, wondering where that is at this point. And also, I've learned that there is, on Section 1, BWALT, Oda Street, went from a cost of $5.5 million to $9 million. And I'd like to know, how come more, $3.5 million more? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any comments on that because I really don't know the answer to those questions. Jenny, do you have any information?
Regarding the first question about the alternate, we're still working on that. And as soon as we're able to, we'll have another public meeting and invite the neighbors for that section again, the abutters, to that meeting to discuss the alternate. In regards to the second question, the Oda Street corridor improvement project is a much bigger project. It doesn't just include the BWALT. It's an intersection improvement at Oda Street and Route 9. And it has multiple different funding sources. It has come in at a higher cost estimate for construction than originally anticipated. So we are looking at how we can get other funding sources. But the BWALT is a portion of that. That involves multiple intersections and signalized lights and things like that.
Anyone else like to comment?
Yes, hi, thank you. Fredlin, our Community Development Director for the Town of Westboro. You probably all know this on the board, but I'd just like to reiterate that in my almost seven and a half years at, happily at the Town of Westboro, we've been working in some form or fashion on the BWALT. Town staff has for more than seven and a half years. It'd be a shame to see all that effort and, and work just come to a screeching halt. So it's not a new project. It's been in town staff for many, many years. And you're probably already aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Kevin Barry, 8 Indian Pond Road. So two things kind of rebuttal is, on the slide that was presented to you at the January 16th meeting, it says Section 1. And it's all about Oda Street. So I don't understand why we're not addressing the shortage of about $3.5 million. It's a major component. They say it is BWALT, and it's only a short component of it. But then we're presented this bunch of numbers that basically say it is BWALT. So that needs to be addressed and clarified first. Secondly, as far as Mr. Leonardo's statement is, just because we've gone this far doesn't mean we need to proceed. There's been a lot of money that's spent so far. And there's a lot of money that needs to be spent for this to come to fruition. So I don't understand that statement. That's not something you should go about business. If something comes in, in an obstacle that doesn't make it feasible as far as costs, then it should be stopped, plain and simple. So that's not a good argument to say, just because we've proceeded this far for years, doesn't mean it should go forward. And just a quick note, as far as, what do we expect as far as a date for this upcoming meeting? And a, I guess, an update as far as the alternate route, if you can?
I don't have a date yet, but I would anticipate within the next couple of months.
Couple of months?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just like to point out that we, as a planning board, have nothing to do with the funding of the project. It's totally before the Board of Selectmen, and it's up to the town at their meetings to decide on funding which would go forth with this particular project. The planning board does not do funding. Is there anyone else?
Can I just, I just wanted to ask Jenny a question about the Oda Street project. Is that the same project that we were trying to get sidewalks in front of Amazon and Cold Harbor? That, so there's like, that whole thing includes sidewalks, intersection improvements, and BWALT? And what else?
Yes, it includes the new signalized intersection at Oda Street and Route 9 with new pedestrian crossings. It includes a signal at the target entrance on Oda Street. And it includes the shared use path, which is the BWALT along Oda Street, linking to Smith Valve Parkway. So it's not just the BWALT. It's the shared use path that we're calling it that's part of that, as we do with many projects.
Right.
But I think the BWALT is actually a very small percentage of the cost of funds that would need to be used out of that project. Is that not correct?
Correct. We would most likely be looking at a shared use path anyway because Mast Dot has been advocating for those instead of a sidewalk because of safety concerns, things like that, as opposed to a sidewalk and then an on, on-road bike lane.
Good answer to your question, Jenny.
Yeah, it does. And I think the other part of, if I'm remembering correctly, we were supposed to get a grant for that sidewalk project when it was just a sidewalk. And then we didn't get it. And that's why those projects, the Amazon, the Cold Harbor, all that, didn't need to put sidewalks in as part of their development.
Correct. There are multiple funding sources for that project through Mass Works, Complete Streets, Mast Dot, and then some ARPA funding, I believe. I'd have to look at my list again. So there's multiple funding sources for it. It's not just specifically for the BWALT.
Yeah, and we, as a planning board, made the, gave the, made sure there was an easement that ran along the front there. So it ran along Oda Street. So we made provision for that when we were doing the site plan for both Amazon and for Cold Harbor.
Yeah, I mean, I think to, to throw around a number like $9 million for the BWALT, that's kind of misleading, to be honest with you, because anybody who's been through Oda Street and Route 9, or seen the multiple accidents there, or waited through three or four light cycles to take a left to go to Shrewsbury, or seen people trying to turn to Walmart during Christmas, and it's backed up, so it's backed up to the Northboro Crossing. I just don't think that that project is about the BWALT. That project is about fixing that intersection. The BWALT is a side path along that, but it's not the primary purpose of that project. So I'd, you know, and that, and none of that was the planning board. So, I mean, I, did you apply for that grant, or was that?
No, I did not. DPW and Engineering and Community Development had been the ones that had advocated for that as part of, you know, coming out of the master plan. And then it's a high-crash intersection. I believe it's on the top 5% of the high-crash intersections in Westboro. So that's why Mast Dot was interested in renovating it. So it's, it wasn't a project that came out of the need for a BWALT. The BWALT happened to become a part of it.
I mean, Mr. Project's been talked around this town for a long time. This is not anything new. And it was a matter of trying to get the funding for it. That was the key.
But I know we got quite a bit of grant money already for it. It just turned out the project is bigger than we got the grant money for, right?
It's the estimated construction costs that came back higher. So a lot of, you know, projects and towns are dealing with that, with the cost of things. They've just gone up. So we are not, we are not going to be asking for additional funding at town meeting. We're seeking other grants, things like that, to be able to get to that number that we need.
And then I just wanted to address another one of the points about, you know, the people want, you know, as far as the results of the survey about sidewalks and
Bike lanes?
Bike lanes and so on. I don't feel like those are mutually exclusive efforts. I mean, we, we see new sidewalks. We, we got a, was it a Complete Streets grant to do sidewalks on East Main Street, which is something long overdue? We've got a grant, I think it's another Shared Streets grant to do a side path on Fisher.
Safe routes to school, yeah.
Safe routes to school, okay. So I, I feel like the town is not neglecting those efforts in order to promote the BWALT. I don't, I don't get that sense. I feel like administration has been working pretty diligently at trying to get grants for all of this. And maybe those grants aren't coming fast enough for, you know, I mean, I would love there to be sidewalks on every street in town, but
Yeah, I don't think all of those
It's not gonna happen overnight.
I don't think all those interests and then BWALT are things that we can't do together at the same time, right?
I do wonder, because I think sidewalks have come up before. I think that's fair. I, I wonder if there's something else we can be doing to, to share with the broader community? All of the different kind of sidewalk work that's happening. You just named a handful. I feel like there are a few more that are maybe a little bit further, based on some of the other plans. But I wonder if there's, if that's part of the problem too, just ensuring that there's visibility? Like, how can we, like, better communicate?
I don't want to take credit for those as the board or the department. I think maybe, you know, the town manager does a newsletter that that's where that, those updates should be. And maybe, I know the town manager asks for input on that. So maybe Jenny could suggest some things could go into that newsletter? And that's something everybody can subscribe to and get.
That's true. She does put those updates in there. And then part of the benefit of having a planner that is specifically for transportation, you know, related initiatives, is that she has been working with DPW and Engineering to go through our project list and find out what the status of all of these are. So I think that's a great idea. And we've been working on making sure that those project updates are on our website. Later this evening, Kristin will be sharing an update on the, both of those projects that you mentioned, Mark.
Kristin's on it. We're in good shape, so that's good.
Yeah, so we, I agree. And I think that's definitely something that we need to continue to do better.
I mean, I think the other thing is that we have to remember that we're not a huge town and that we have staff. Staff is spread very thin at the moment. They're working very hard to get what grants they can to cover various projects. We're also obviously under the same constraints that the whole town is on our budgeting, on the money we spend in this town. There are priorities. So that it's very important that the planning board be able to work with all the departments in town that are looking for funding in various ways. And I think, you know, we have to remember those kinds of things also because there are so many calls by this town for money to be spent on various projects in town. And at the same time, we have our, members of our community that are raising questions about the cost of our taxes. So it's a real balancing act as to which projects get funded, which projects the town has to work on to try to get funding for. So, you know, I think that in this day and age, there are a lot of problems that we're all facing and that we have to look at the priorities and try to work out as far as what this town can afford to spend on what projects. Is there anyone else? I have someone who, yes, she wanted to speak? Yeah.
Thank you. Ellen Google, 84 Fisher Street. Many of you know me as the Chair of the ATSC, but this is just me speaking. Our committee hasn't met about this. I just wanted to say that this, I, I understand the town is really constrained in funding. And I love that the town is going for different grants and everything. It may be that there may be a delay at some point with parts of the BWALT until funding is found from outside sources. You mentioned the Fisher Street project, totally state-funded, safe routes to schools. You mentioned the East Main Street project, DPW, great job. TIP project, Mass DOT, no reason BWALT can't be the same. That's what we've been trying to do all along, to make it a trail and very attractive and get the momentum so that the state will fund it under the TIP program. And lastly, I just want to say that I hope that this board will vote to support the BWALT going forward, even if it needs to be slowed down for a lack of outside funding. It doesn't mean it comes to a stop. We'll keep on working for it. So I really hope you'll do that.
Thank you. Anyone else if you'd like to, okay, go ahead, Joanne. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna, yeah, go ahead.
Wayne Webster, 3 Essex Way. I'm a bike rider, so I'm used to being on rail trails. What I found unusual about this one is that, I mean, typically rail trails are developed, and they're, they're kind of easy to develop because you go on a rail trail. You actually go where there was a railroad. And we have a short section that there was a railroad, and the rest of it's gone. But we're creating this thing, this big loop, which I think is what's driving some of the cost up and causing some of the problems. I know you're not responsible for financing, but what I'd like to see soon is somebody talk about a min-max of what they think the numbers are gonna be. We've heard numbers like $19 million, $24 million, but really sit down and drive into the, look at those numbers with or without grants. And also start to talk about long-term maintenance. Well, once the thing is built, there's certain things that are gonna have to be maintained. There is disabled programs, there's all kinds of things. And in going across sensitive areas, how much is And then going across sensitive areas, how much is that going to cost? There's been discussion of volunteers, and people are going to jump in and help and apparently work for free, but long-term, that doesn't work. On the rail trails that I go on, the towns and cities that own them not only have beautiful beaches and whatever it is, forests or whatever for you to look at, but they have employees who take care of the darn thing, the hot top, the hard surface, and deal with all of that for years to come. Once we have it, we'll have to keep it, and we'll have to maintain it. And I think it's time, especially as you said, working with all the departments, that those people who are responsible for the financing really start to drill down on this thing so everybody can understand what it's going to cost, because we can't just have everything. And I'm not specifically against it or for it. It'll run near my house, you know, God bless everybody that wants to use it. But the only piece that I'm aware of, that I've walked on, starts at Park Street and goes down across East Main, and that's what's remaining of the rail trail. And as we go around other parts of town, whether it's Otis Street, or up by Walmart, or anything else, that, there was no trail there. There was no railroad there, and that makes it very expensive. So I'd like everybody just to keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just address some of those comments? So rail trails are not always exclusively on an old railroad, but they can, you know, veer off and go different directions. I'm talking into the microphone. And I don't know how much closer I can get without...
I think that's better.
Being really close. Okay. So rail trails are not always on exclusively the railroad right-of-way.
You don't run down people's streets.
Excuse me, yeah. So, you know, I'm not concerned about that. The other thing is this concern about not thinking about maintenance of the trail and not thinking about costs and everything, and it's kind of insulting to town staff that these professionals don't think about these things. They don't think about who's going to maintain the trail. They just want to have a trail. And then once it's done, it's, oh, somebody else will handle it. Like, that's, that's not realistic. And so all of these things are thought about. You might not know the details right now because we can't figure them out, but I just want to give our town staff a little bit of credit of thinking through these things already. We might not know all the answers, they might not know all the answers, but they're thinking through it. So it's not this unplanned development. So, I mean, Fred spoke to, seven and a half years, he's been here more than that, of staff working on it. They're not spending all that time just dreaming plans and then not going through the, you know, operations of it.
Yes, Mr. Byrne?
Don Byrne, 58 Flanders Road. I wanted to address the last speaker's comments a little. First, on the right-of-way, the right-of-way in Westboro goes all the way from the Southboro border to Park Street. It is almost entirely intact, except for one building placed in, by Cruith, next to SVT, and Cruith is willing to work with us to provide an alternate. The right-of-way is intact. The second thing on the maintenance, we did, when we were doing the feasibility study, I worked with the DPW director and used, the Rails-to-Trails has a calculator on what a trail maintenance will be. And it's well-respected, and so far has, in the last seven or eight years that they've had this spreadsheet, it has been proven to be fairly accurate. And you can put in the town's cost per maintenance hour. You can also identify how much of the work can be done by volunteers, and we were not what you would call a, during the feasibility study, I don't have the exact number in my head, but it was not a very large amount of money to maintain the trails.
Thank you.
But the research was done with the, DPW did do the work to research it, and the town employees, and I just helped with giving them some of the tools to make it work.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who's been spoken?
Quickly.
I think Joanne was...
Just to make it clear, I wasn't criticizing anybody in the town. Last time I looked, they work for the people who pay the taxes, and if I have a question and I'm wrong about it, that's fine. That's fine. I have a right to ask a question. I appreciate the work that gets done, but I also want to hear very clearly elucidated costs and reasons for doing what we're doing. Right now, we're talking about the B-Walt. I feel that about the school system and everything else. So the people here are working, their salaries get paid by taxpayers, and, and we have a right to have the full disclosure. Thank you.
In no way was I saying there's no right to disclosure. I'm saying the staff give us information when they know it. That's all I'm saying. They're not hiding anything, they're not making things up, they're not not thinking through things.
And we're not the funding arm for the town. I mean, I think people have remembered that, we're the planners. Joanne, I think you have a question.
Joanne Aramini, 7 Meadow Road. So I guess we agree to disagree, and sounds like we're not going to get any traction here, so I just want to point things out to the public. I don't know what you mean, Mr. Silverberg, when you talk about three separate questions being all the same thing. They're not the same question. Clearly, the data in that master plan shows that people want to get neighborhoods connected together by sidewalks, and that's very different from what B-Walt is right now, the plan that's proposed. Other thing is, your very own PowerPoint, Jenny, says B-Walt is part of Otis Street. B-Walt can't happen without Otis Street. The people from Arrive and everybody else can't cross Otis Street intersection because it is dangerous. So how are they going to get on the other side to the commuter? Supposedly, it's all commuter, a commuter trail now. So how will they do that, getting across Otis if we don't have that done? I can go on and on about the feasibility study. It's so outdated. It's so outdated. You just have to look at the numbers. It's crazy. And I'm not talking just about the money, I'm talking about the users and everything about it. And we've said it before, and I'll just end with it, it's a biased study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hazel, can I respond?
Yep.
Since I was addressed on that. So I, I served on the Master Plan Advisory Committee for over two years. I chair currently of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So I'm very familiar with that survey. I helped create it, I helped to collect it, we discussed it. I never said that your three questions were all one. I said that they were not mutually exclusive, meaning I think that we as a town should be working on improving sidewalks. I think we should be working on improving bike paths, and I do think that we should be working on this B-Walt. Now, what I also said was, we should be looking for alternative sources of funding whenever we can, whether it be sidewalks, as was already pointed out, that's being done by the state, whether it be bike lanes that's being done with a grant, or whether it be the B-Walt, right? This Otis Street project is about much, much more than the B-Walt, and to simplify it into a $9 million expense for the B-Walt, it just, it completely ignores what needs to be done at that intersection to make it safe, to make it more efficient. I mean, that is one of the worst-graded intersections in the state. So I don't understand how anybody in this town could be opposed to that intersection being upgraded. It, it makes no sense to me.
All right, and I, I really don't like this back and forth. If you have some comments, I think, Joanne, you've made your point very clear to us. You've written us a number of letters at this particular time. If you have anything further to say on this, why don't you put in correspondence? The other thing is, I think a number of these things that you've raised need to be directed towards the Board of Selectmen, not towards the planning board. So, you know, we're not sitting here to have a back-and-forth discussion, back-and-forth in conversations. We're trying to get new information, if you have for us, and I think you presented your point very clearly to us. If you have anything further new to add to what you've told us, or what your written correspondence has been, we'd be happy to hear. But the point of the discussion here tonight is to find out any other, further information, which the planning board might be useful for us when our discussions come up on the, on the B-Walt. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to raise any other questions or further raise any new information? If not, I would add...
Thank you, if you'll allow me.
Again, there's a couple things. We, just to address this $9 million budget, we, we understand that. We've read that audit, the survey that was done years before that initiated, obviously, the funding, and we know that intersection is very dangerous category, I think 15% or whatever it was. What I want to make clear as far as public outreach and, and some of the things we've come across as far as town officials, and so the public understands where we're coming from. We've done a lot of research. Yes, we were opposed to it because of the things we've laid out. Back in September, early September, we met with the Director of Conservation and the Director of Planning. We brought a number of these concerns when we first started getting involved with this. The comments that were, so one of the comments that came back to us was, when I outreach to Shrewsbury, Northboro, and Southboro, there was limited interest at that point in time. They were years out, way years out, as opposed to what they said on January 16th. I spoke to all of those individuals. When we addressed that to the Conservation Director and the Planning Director, and said, what about community outreach in other towns, they said and made it perfectly clear that they are happy with, this is their words, they're fine with it being an in-town Westboro trail, regardless of connectivity to the towns, number one. Number two, when we talked about community outreach, public input, as what has been discussed with the feasibility study both in 19 and 21, that has never happened. I've lived in this town since 98. I was only made aware until about this in July of '23, when I was outreach to, for the Planning Board to do, or, I'm sorry, Conservation Commission to do a survey. So that was when I first really became involved with this. But when we addressed concerns about what we had, and the public outreach and the meetings, we were told that these meetings that happened in May of '30, and September 11th, and one on January 16th, by the Planning Director and the Conservation Director, where these meetings were made to placate and make palatable to the stakeholders, residents, and abutters, plain and simple. So for the town officials to say that to us when we're bringing concerns is absurd, and that's why we are extremely frustrated at people not listening to this. So the fact that we're here and discussing that, we're not sure where else. We're hitting all these different departments and commissions to hear our concerns, and it's not. Thank you for your time.
I mean, we've heard the concerns in the last couple of meetings, so we're listening to the concerns.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to make a comment on this decision? If not, I'd like to ask how the board would like to proceed on this.
What are you thinking?
I'm, I'm a little concerned about the fact, what, I'm trying to figure out what the Board of Selectmen is looking for us, looking to us for. We have supported the B-Walt by staff work, by looking for easements when they've been available on this. We've had developers come before us. I'm not sure what else the Board of Selectmen is looking for from us as a planning board. I think that we have supported the master plan as far as the B-Walt gone. We've used hours and hours and hours of staff work in order to get funding for the B-Walt, and I'm not sure what the Board of Selectmen is asking us to do to go beyond what we're doing as far as planning goes. And this is what our mission is, and what we've been asked by the town to do, and by our residents to put us on this board, is to look at planning, and I think we've supported this as a planning board. So I guess my question to the board is whether there's something else they think we should be doing, what we should be passing along to the Board of Selectmen, and that's my question to the other members of the board.
So, I don't know, Jenny, have you heard anything from the Select Board as to what they're looking from for us, or looking for from us?
I haven't heard anything additional. I think that the general consensus is that they want to know whether the planning board is going to support this, continue to support the implementation moving forward.
Okay. So, that being said, I drafted a motion ahead of time, assuming they wanted some type of motion for support. So I am willing to offer that and have it discussed unless the board doesn't think...
Why don't you put that before us on the board?
Mark, did you want to say something first?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to hear that motion. I, I mean, I think you know how I feel about the B-Walt. I think, you know, I am in support of the, the concept, but I, I was under the impression that this was, we were having these public discussions so that the public could voice their concerns, so that we could discuss those and figure out how to better improve this process, or product, or, you know, I think one of the things that's come out of this is the transparency issue, because we had that meeting with the Select Board, and there were over 100 people here, maybe, and I can never remember in the history of the B-Walt, there being that many people at a meeting, but I do think we did have meetings despite, you know, some claims to the contrary. So I'm just a little, I'm unclear what we're supposed to do, but if you want to make a motion on it, you know, I'm happy to discuss the motion.
John?
I move that the Planning Board authorize and direct the Chair to send a letter to the Select Board with the following statement. "The Planning Board supports the continued effort of the town to establish the Boston Worcester Airline Trail B-Walt. Multi-use shared paths are repeatedly shown to provide myriad benefits to communities in the areas of public health, safety, economic and community development, and traffic. As such, the Planning Board recommends that the Select Board take no, no action to hinder, delay, pause, or otherwise stop reasonable efforts of town staff, boards, and committees to continue the work necessary to achieve the collective goal of completing the B-Walt as recommended in the Westboro Strategic Plan of 2018 and Master Plan of 2021."
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
No, nothing for me.
John?
No. I mean, I'm, I'm going to vote against it. I just feel like there needs to be more transparency before we can tell them to move forward with anything. Until there's more transparency, I just can't move forward with that.
Is there, should we look at adding something to that effect, so that it's, we support with essentially the condition of, or a visible plan for communication and transparency? Yeah, I think...
Yeah, I don't know how you can, I mean, yeah, we could include that, I think that's helpful, but I just don't know how we can hold the Select Board accountable for that transparency. It seems, and Mark, I think, but I mean, you're saying with engagement, it sounds like more people want to be engaged, which is great.
Yeah.
It's just...
There were multiple meetings. I don't know. I've had conversations with, like, the community development coordinator on this as well in terms of just generally, how can we better announce and encourage participation in the meeting? It's difficult. Everyone has their own preferred method. Yeah, but I do wonder if there's something about, you know, and maybe setting a different, I don't know if standard is the right word, but like...
Yeah, so I have this to offer, I guess. Change the first sentence to, "The Planning Board supports the continued effort of the town to establish the Boston Worcester Airline Trail B-Walt in a transparent, public way."
Yeah, I guess my thing is, whatever, it's obviously not working for some folks in town, how it's being handled now, so I don't know.
But, I mean, you said to keep, you know, to, I forget what you said, to keep the Select Board honest, or to hold them accountable. But this, I mean, this is a recommendation, so it's not like we're requiring them to do this.
I know.
So that there's...
I just don't want it to sound like we're saying, oh, keep doing what you're doing because it's obviously working.
But I do wonder, so within the last 12 months, there have been pamphlets that I've seen in town, at the library, at Town Hall, like, there are pamphlets, there were flyers. I myself attended the meetings. I guess feels like, since a lot of the concerns have been heard, that there have been, maybe not when the, maybe there wasn't as much visibility... not when the, maybe there wasn't as much visibility when the feasibility study was done, but more recently, that feels more transparent than, than not, I guess. I don't, I, or maybe it's a question, like, what, what is, what else is transparent?
Yeah.
I'm willing to amend my motion to include that transparency portion of the first sentence. I think that's just where it fits. I don't know where else it would fit.
And if it, and if it doesn't fit, and you want to move forward and it's, you know, for-
I think, no, I agree. I think it should be in a transparent, public. I don't think that's, that's something that should be avoided. I just don't know where, deciding the first sentence, I don't know where it would be.
Mark, you were going to say it.
So, again, I think it gets back to where, first of all, we're, as well drafted as that motion was, you know, I didn't see it before tonight, so it, you know, it sounded good to me. It sounded like an express, but now we have reservations about, well, should there be something? So I would prefer that we, with the permission of the Chair, instruct Jenny to draft a motion, distribute it to the board, we can discuss it at a future meeting if that's the case, because I'm just a little bit, like, I jumped in with a second because I wanted to discuss it, and it sounded good. I do think the B-Walt does a myriad of benefits. I do think it's, but I honestly can't remember the rest of the motion.
No, I get that, yeah. I didn't want to send it out before.
So I just want, like, if we're going to spend the rest of our meeting wordsmithing this motion, I, I think that's kind of counterproductive.
No, I agree fully. I, I think there are parts that are fine, there are parts that I'm not happy with. So I, you know, very much would like to, I mean, I, this was a good discussion to put something on the floor to discuss. I think, Mark, your idea of having Jenny take this, maybe talk to John, send it out, let us have a chance to take a look at it, do our own wordsmithing on it, and come back at the next meeting with another, with a perhaps revised version of this particular motion. As I said, I'm, I would not, I could not vote in favor of this motion the way it's written at this particular time.
So I also think it's unclear whether the Select Board is even expecting us to make this motion, so.
I mean, it's basically just made to, as a recommendation, right? It's to support the B-Walt. They asked us if we support the B-Walt. We've shown time and again, we support the B-Walt, so it's kind of just putting it in writing. That's my intent here.
No, I understand that.
But I don't know if they've asked us if we-
But, I mean, they don't have to ask us. We can just send it to them.
Well, we can, I agree.
Right, so like, this is, this is taking the initiative and saying, "Here, we don't know what you want, so we're telling you how we feel."
Right. I mean-
But I just, I guess I would prefer, like, a draft of this so I could look at it. As much as, like, you know, agree with a lot of the sentiments, I don't want to spend the rest of this meeting-
No, I don't.
-wordsmithing it. I really don't think that's productive.
Jenny, I copied you on that, right?
All right, could I have a motion then to?
It's not a hearing.
What?
It's not a hearing. We don't need to.
I'm going to withdraw my second. How's that?
Well, there are a couple that do that, or also just have a motion to continue this.
Can I, can I withdraw my motion?
Yep.
All right, I move, I withdraw my motion. All right.
Is there a second? All right.
You don't have to second.
I guess you have a second on that. Okay. We withdrawn it, we'll discuss this after we've done some wordsmithing on it.
Say thank you, John, though. I appreciate that.
It's good to get something on the floor, and that's where we go. And as I said, I'm still confused myself as to what the board really, what the board is like when really wants from us. And, you know, I think we all support the B-Walt. The question is what they're looking for from us, and I think we're having trouble working that out ourselves. So let's adjourn this till the next meeting and discuss it further.
And I just want to say, I encourage everyone to go to the Select Board meetings and ask them as many questions too. So, thank you.
And particularly questions as far as the funding goes. I mean, this is not something the Planning Board deals with. So thank you. If, we'll continue on with our agenda if people don't wish to go on. Yes, Tom, you got a comment?
I just wanted to make a suggestion because you were looking like, how do we get more transparency? And active transportation and safety has been looking at the question of an active transportation plan, or a mobility plan, or an active communities plan since the master plan was approved. And there is a large amount of data collection and presentation you normally do to build one of those plans, and B-Walt would obviously be a significant portion of such a plan. So that might be a forum and a way to provide more information and to get more input. I'm not saying tie the two tightly together, but recognize, but at least provide a way, a forum to say, "Well, wait a minute, what about sidewalks versus B-Walt? What are we doing that this all could fit in there?" And that should be something that should be thought of as part of the, whatever type of plan, which is the first question, what type of, what level of plan do you want?
Thank you. All right, that concludes our discussion on the B-Walt tonight. If people don't wish to stay any longer for the rest of our agenda, I suggest they leave now and will continue with our agenda. All right, Jenny, you want to give us an overview of the town meeting warrant articles?
Yes, and I'll just remind the board that I'm just giving an overview here, that the public hearing for this will be on February 25th. For the public, it will be on February 25th at 6:30 in this same room. So this is just an overview of the warrant articles. So the first zoning bylaw amendment will be for accessory dwelling units. As you know, the state's Affordable Homes Act took effect on February 2nd, and it requires municipalities to allow for accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, as I'll call them, by right in any single-family zoning district. And then also prohibits a municipality from requiring a discretionary zoning approval, like a special permit for an ADU. So the bylaw as written reflects what is required by the legislation. And so it is currently in effect right now, technically, because it's past February 2nd. So right now, ADUs are allowed by right. In Westboro, we already allow them by right if it's in a, if it's attached to the principal dwelling, the, the home. However, this expands it to comply with the legislation that it can be in a detached structure as well. Also, one of the changes, which is in line with the current requirements in our ADU bylaw, is that it can be 1,000 square feet. It's 1,000 square feet or 50% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is smaller. And that is what we have right now in our bylaw. However, again, we don't allow for detached in our bylaw, so this would expand that to be the same as what is required in the legislation. The setbacks for this bylaw, it would be the same for a single-family home, because we cannot be more restrictive than we would for a single-family home. Other changes that we made are that if someone wants to have a larger ADU than otherwise permitted, then they can apply for a special permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is also something that we currently have in our bylaw, so that's not changing.
Jenny, just one question. If you wanted to reduce the size of the setbacks, would they also be able to go to the Board of Appeals for a special permit on that?
Yes. If you want to alter any dimensional controls, then it would be a special permit through the Zoning Board. So that really is, is all the changes. You, you cannot have a short-term rental. The legislation allows for us to prohibit short-term rentals. We can no longer require an owner occupancy. That's just part of the law now. No more than one ADU on a lot. And I believe that's pretty much it. I tried to make it as simple as possible because it's really Mass General Law 40A, Section 3, that's driving this, which is the same section that protects religious uses and educational uses. So there's, there's not much more that we can do with this unless you wanted to change it to allow for smaller setbacks than what's required for a single-family home, but you can't make it more restrictive.
So is this article erasing the existing language and just reinserting a new?
Yes.
I have a quick question. Are we allowed to ask questions, just not discuss?
You can ask questions, just not discuss.
I guess, should this reference the state law? I don't think it, I don't think it does. And maybe it doesn't need to. I guess that was my only question, is if it needed, like, you know, rationale for the change, like, in accordance with, you know, the new state law.
No, I know what you mean. No, we don't need to. I mean, I can, I could certainly add it into the purpose, but we don't need to. The, the state law, like I said, is in place no matter what we have. So we could not have a bylaw at all, and it would still be in there.
Sure.
But ours has a larger square footage allowance than the state law. The state law is 900 square feet.
So our current requirement of 1,000 square feet is going to stay in place? We're allowed to go?
Yes, yep.
What if somebody has a 900-square-foot house?
So it's-
They build-
No.
-a primary dwelling?
Because it's 1,000 square feet or 50% of the gross floor area, whichever is smaller. So if someone had a 900-square-foot house, if that was the gross floor area, then it would be 450 square feet that they would max.
So we're going to, we're allowed to do that? 50% of the floor area?
Yeah, either or, whichever is smaller.
Right, but the smaller being-
That's the definition. The definition is one-
So the state is going to be okay with us limiting somebody to a 600-square-foot ADU if they have a 1,200-square-foot house?
It's in the state law.
Right. We can't, we're not, we're not saying only half the, your only option is half the gross floor area. The, how it's written is, the state law is written, 900 square feet or 50% of the gross floor area.
Whichever is smaller.
Whichever is smaller. That's how the state law is-
So the state is okay with telling somebody with a 1,200-square-foot house that they can only build a 600-square-foot ADU?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's in the, yeah, that, that requirement is in the state law.
And somebody with a nine, with an 800-square-foot house is not going to have any means of saying, "I want this to be my ADU and I'm going to build a bigger house"?
It has to be, the ADU has to be accessory to the principal dwelling.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to get into this, but if they have an 800-square-foot house and a lot that could make a larger house, they could make a larger house and then build an ADU as well. Like, if, if, if the concern is an 800-square-foot house-
They'd have to get rid of the 800-square-foot house.
Well, no, they could always build an addition.
Yeah.
If they have the lot area, they could build the addition on that house. The presumption is if it's-
We're getting into hypotheticals.
Yeah. And I think it's important to remember the purpose of this is to increase, you know, housing choices for everyone in a different way that's not necessarily creating more single-family homes. It's creating other housing options. But if you have any comments or questions on this, please email them to me, because this isn't a public hearing just yet, and it is advertised. So if anybody does come in and apply for an accessory dwelling unit, then this would be in place and any permits would be at risk. We don't anticipate any, we've had a lot of questions about that.
This is not a public hearing.
Oh, it's not a, oh.
No.
Yeah, the- I misread the agenda.
The public hearing on this is at our next meeting.
That's good, I'll be back.
Okay. All right, Jenny, next-
I just have one more question on that.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, you can ask questions of Jenny, but just, we cannot have a discussion because we're not having a public-
So I know you said this came from pre-drafted language, or is that, anyway, I know that the Attorney General's Office is offering to review draft bylaws.
Yep, they have it.
Given that our town meeting is coming up so quickly, they have it and they, okay, that's my question, thank you.
I'm on top of it.
I know you are. I just, I just want the public to know how on top of it. Everyone else needs to know how on top of it.
Public at this point has all the zoning articles which are going to be for the town meeting to take a look at.
And I'm also giving a presentation to the Select Board on February 11th.
That's going to next week, isn't it?
I think it's next Tuesday. Yes, February 11th. So I'll be giving a presentation to them, which will be much more detailed. I don't know if they take public comment on those. They might not, because the Planning Board takes the public comment, but there will be a more detailed presentation at that point. Okay, ready to go on?
Yep, revision in Section 5.3 and 5.4 of the zoning laws.
Okay. So this article is intended to amend some inconsistencies within Section 5.3, 5.4, and the Table of Uses. 5.3 and 5.4 are four-dimensional regulations, and then the Table of Uses is the use control. It also updates an outdated requirement that mandates municipal projects in the M1 zoning district need town meeting approval for dimensional standards. And we did speak with town council about this, but essentially, under Mass General Law, town meeting has the responsibility for authorizing and appropriating budget, reviewing and acting on proposed bylaws and zoning changes. However, how our bylaw is written as it pertains to the M1 zoning district, it essentially allows for town meeting to act as the special permit granting authority, when under Mass General Law, that should be under the purview of the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Appeals. So what this does is that it will require municipal projects in the M1 zoning district to go through the site plan review process, as would any project. So it would either qualify for a full site plan review or a limited site plan review, depending on the size of the project. And then they, I also added in dimensional standards that ensure compliance with the Mass General Law minimum requirements for size and setbacks. And then it also amends the Table of Uses. Right now, for some reason, in the Table of Uses, the sale of Christmas trees and indoor recreation is prohibited in the M1 zoning district, which we sell Christmas trees on town-owned property during the season. So I don't know why it says that, but we thought this was a good opportunity to change that N to a Y to allow it. So that is basically the overview of that. And in the article, you can follow what changes are being made by strikeout. It shows what is being struck out and what is being added.
Thank you, Jenny. And this was very helpful to me. I mean, I was happy to be able to take a look at it and this over the redlining.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Acceptance of 190 to 212 Oak Street.
Oh, I just want-
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I thought you were moving on to something else.
Not quite.
190 and 212 Oak Street, I'm sure most of you remember, was the sending parcel that was agreed to as part of the Village Commons apartment building or multifamily building to allow for more density. And so when that decision was made, I had gone to town council about it to put it on the town meeting warrant, and they had relayed that because it is proposed to be used for open space, recreation, that the Conservation Commission could offer to essentially take it without going through town meeting. I can't remember the, the Mass General Law that that's allowed under, but Conservation Commission did not want to take it. So now we have to go to town meeting to have town meeting allow for the Select Board to accept it as a gift. So it just won't be under Conservation's jurisdiction.
Go ahead.
Yep, the sidewalk easement is for 2 Bridle Lane. If you recall, we had a site plan review for Boston Lawn Mower at 2 Bridle Lane, and one of the planning board conditions was to get a sidewalk easement in front of the property for any future improvements to that road. And so we need to go to town meeting, for town meeting to authorize the select board to enter into an easement agreement. That's it.
All right. Do you have any updates for us?
I do. This was sent out to the board, but we are having a wayfinding meeting, another public meeting, which, for the public, is essentially signage around town, directing you to areas to park or different areas of interest. And then the branding is basically a logo on the sign on what we want people to see when they come to Westboro.
And what's the date of that meeting?
February 24th at 6:00 PM. And then on the downtown plan, we had our first meeting with the engineer that we hired, and so we're beginning work on that. And we will be having public information meetings starting in early summer. And so that will talk to the businesses, to the residents in the area, about the concept plan that we had come up with or came away with from the original downtown plan, and really getting into more detail on what people want to see in terms of sidewalks, bike lanes, orientation of the rotary, things like that. Then we did send out a request for quotes for a signed bylaw for the downtown to revise that. That is a result from an earmark that we received a couple years ago now, before I had started. So we have $20,000 to use towards that. And so we put it out to bid and are waiting for consultants to come back to write the downtown signed bylaw. Lastly, the One Stop for Growth Grant Program is open now, and one of the things that we're looking at doing is we are collaborating with North Borough and South Borough to do a Route 9 corridor study. So we're applying for a grant under the, oh my gosh, I can't remember the name of the planning, community planning grant program. So essentially, it would look at economic development on Route 9, employment trends, it would look at the vacancy rates, and then some zoning to give recommendations on how to improve those things. So that is in collaboration with Three Towns. And that's all I have. I know the board had asked if Kristin could give some updates for affordable housing and transportation, if you would like her to come up and give those updates.
And while she's coming up, I really would like to thank Jenny and her staff for the amount of time and effort they've put in to look for grants to cover various projects in this town. I don't think the public realizes the amount of staff work that has to go in to finding the grants, applying for the grants, working with other departments to get the materials together. So...
And then add on to that managing the grants once they're awarded, right?
So I just really would like to give a shout out to our staff for the kind of work that they're doing in this community.
Thank you.
Okay. Kristin?
All right. So as Jenny had mentioned, I'm going to be providing a quick update of transportation and housing items that I'm working on. As Mark mentioned earlier, he tried to steal my thunder. We have two Mass DOT projects in town. The first one being the Seafoots to School. That goes down Fisher Street in front of the Mill Pond School, and then it continues to the end at the intersection of Church Street.
Gibbons, it's not Mill Pond.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gibbons. But it ends right before the intersection, just to be clear, that's not part of this project. They are doing the 25% design for that right now. They're reviewing three different alternatives. The preferred option at this point includes 11-foot travel lanes in the road, a two-foot shoulder, and then an eight-foot path on the school side of the street with a three-foot buffer. And then in areas that there may be pinch points, they would remove the buffer in that location. There's no takings involved that they've identified at this point. So...
I want to make it clear on that, that that is a proposed shared-use path.
So when we have updates, when they come back again with their design plan, I will give you those at that time. The other item, our project, is the Mass DOT tip project. That's scheduled for 2029. That is the area, the Hastings School driveway, just past Lyman Street on Route 30, and then it continues down Route 30 to Thomas Newton Drive. Part of that project, they're reviewing the intersection at Flanders Road and East Main Street. That's part of the scoping, so they'll identify if a traffic light's warranted or a rotary or whatever is most appropriate. They're also looking at connectivity going under Route 9. That's under consideration, as well as in this area, there's a spur for the B-Walt that veers off going down Route 30. They're looking at how the shared-use path could be incorporated as part of that section along with their plans. So those are those two. I have met with DPW. I met with Derek Sari, the Assistant DPW Director, and we did go through the complete streets prioritization plan that was referenced. So we'll be working together to get updates on all of those, you know, as far as what's finished, what's on deck, what, you know, is long-term. So I'll be working to get those updates on the website and available, and I'll be sharing that with ATSC when I have it. ATSC identified 12 locations around town for the vulnerable road user signs. I don't know if anybody's seen those. They've been installed. The sign tells drivers that you need to give a four-foot minimum distance between you and the vulnerable user, being a walker, a runner, a biker. And if you have to cross the double yellow in order to do that, so be it. So when you're driving around, you'll notice on Route 30, right past Tufts, if you're going eastbound on the right-hand side, there's one there. They put one at the end of Otis Street. If you're turning off Fisher, taking a right onto Otis, there's one on the right-hand side there. I have all the locations, but those are just a couple examples.
Have they been posted on the town website or anything?
As far as where the locations are, I don't believe so, but I can mention to ATSC that we can add that.
Yeah, I was just thinking, it might be nice to see them posted so that people are aware of them.
Where they are.
You know, makes people think, maybe they, you may miss the sign, but at least you have some idea where they are. I think it might be important for the public to know.
I believe we sent an email to everybody on the board regarding the WRTA Connecting Communities follow-up report. The final report is on our website. If you didn't have a chance, just to summarize their recommendations, they gave us some short-term fixes that are no-cost-involved implementations. They are suggesting to change the via zone slightly into two smaller zones. This would increase wait time for people getting the service.
You mean decrease?
Yeah, decrease wait time. Those wishing to travel across zones would pay a surcharge. Thus, that might incentivize shorter trips. They're expanding further into North Borough, and they're reshaping Shrewsbury to minimize the places where there was overlap with the fixed route. They don't want to compete with that. And then one of the areas that would be expanded would be Route 20 and then the Grafton MBTA. Let's see. And then the medium-to-long-term recommendation, it just depends on when funding is available for that. Medium term, the fixed route that already exists on Route 15 that goes from Worcester to Southgate and Shrewsbury would continue to North Borough Crossing. And then the long term, so the next step after that, would be North Borough Crossing to downtown Westboro. And Route 9. So those were the two suggestions from that. As far as Affordable Housing Trust, they have a few properties that they're working on currently. Three Baylor, that's a neighborhood that's off Lyman Street, across from, like, the Del Webb, Chauncey Lake area on the other side where the pickleball courts are over there. There was a house that existed, they demoed it, and now they're waiting for the building permit to be issued. MCO and Associates is going to be building a brand-new, three-bedroom, two-bath house there. I've checked with engineering and DPW, all the paperwork is in. We're just waiting for him to pay his sediment and erosion bond, and then once that's done, the permit should get issued. Let's see, 6 Beach Street.
Kristin, I'm sorry. Will that be a lottery for purchase, do you know?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
6 Beach Street, they are hoping to do an RFP for that property in the spring. However, they're currently evaluating site conditions and risks. The property used to be a tannery a long time ago, so they're requesting tie-in bond to do a Level 1 environmental assessment first. And then they're also waiting for results of different test pits to come back to decide where, you know, Septic is going to need to go. And then they're also needing to talk about potentially connecting with the neighbor at Westboro Country Village for an egress for emergency services. So those things still need to be worked out, but hopefully we'll have an RFP in the spring for that. Let's see. I believe that's it. High Street Extension, 45 High Street Extension is another property, same thing as 6 Beach Street. They're doing the test pits and trying to evaluate the site first, but I believe that's it.
Thank you. Does any board member have any questions for Kristin? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Reports from members of town, people who are in the town committees. Design review is due to me, I think, next week. We've not had a meeting since December. Any other committee meetings, anyone's attended?
Yes. Last night, I attended the Community Preservation Committee to review the plan. It ran very long, so we didn't quite get through, but the intent is to have a final plan in March to share.
Good. All right, minutes, the 21st of January.
Did those get sent out? I don't have them in my inbox.
Out with the agenda on 1/29.
I don't think I got the agenda. I was wondering that, too.
January 29th.
Anything from the 29th?
Nope. You are on this under...
All right, well, let's...
How about we not put my personal email address out in the poll?
Okay, we'll put that off till next meeting.
Email?
Yeah, that was the wrong email address.
All right. Until the next meeting. All right, upcoming meeting dates, 3, 4, 18, and April 1st. Any problems with those dates?
And February 25th should be on there.
Oh, yeah, that's our next, that's our immediate next meeting. All right, is there anything else anybody would like to bring forward to the board tonight? If not, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Second. All in favor? Thank you very much. Stay warm, everyone. Thank you.